I am going to declare the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one mission, under God, indivisible, infinite, and endless.
Here.
Councilmember Cody.
Here.
Mayor Proton Zaring.
Here.
Councilmember Whitlow.
Here.
Councilmember Gustad.
Here.
City manager.
Here.
City attorney.
Here.
Finance director.
Here.
Public safety director.
Here.
City engineer.
Here.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Citizen comments on agenda-related items. This is the portion of the meeting if any citizens in attendance would like to comment on tonight's agenda, please come forward and state your name and address. Is there anyone who would like to comment on tonight's agenda? Now we'll move on to the consent agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and can certify that the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include approval of minutes, approval of payroll, cash balance report, notification regarding the next work session, and consideration for coming April as Parkinson's disease awareness month. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion that the council approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
I have a motion by Councilmember Cody, support by Mayor Proton Zaring, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion on this? Now will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Gustad.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlow.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Zaring.
Yes.
Councilmember Cody.
Yes.
Mayor Kenny.
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you. Unfinished business, we have none. New business. Consideration of a resolution on DNR waterways grant for Marina dredging project. Originally, the city was awarded a grant in amount of $24,000 from the Michigan Department of Natural Resources Waterways Division for dredging at the municipal Marina. Bids came in higher than expected and the state of Michigan authorized additional money for this project at a not-to-exceed amount of $65,000. This addendum to the original award is necessary in order to draw down the funds for the project. The project was awarded to Swidorowski Brothers in December for a spring project. There is no CDMAT. Is there a motion to accept the agreement addendum?
I'll make a motion that the council take action to accept the agreement addendum from the Michigan Department of Natural Resources, accepting the not-to-exceed amount of $65,000 for dredging at the municipal Marina and further ask for the mayor and city clerk to execute those documents.
Support.
I have a motion by Councilmember Gustad, support by Mayor Proton Zaring, to accept the agreement addendum for the Michigan Department of Natural Resources. Is there any discussion?
We have some further explanation on what happened here?
Sure.
It got lost in the shuffle. I'm not sure if I dropped the ball or Van Mark dropped the ball, but one of us did. I got a message from Paul Peterson that he and I a couple weeks ago saying, "Did you get it to me?" And both Cory and Van Mark and I both thought this came through already. We didn't find the documents. We just, one of us dropped the ball.
Okay.
May I have questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Please take the roll.
Councilmember Whitlow.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Zaring.
Yes.
Councilmember Cody.
Yes.
Mayor Kenny.
Yes.
Councilmember Gustad.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of entering into a five-year agreement with Anderson, Tagman, and Company, PLC, CPA, to conduct city and DDA annual audit. The city's contract with Gabbridge and Company for the city and DDA audit has expired. The city issued a request for proposals for auditing services. Ten firms responded. Anderson, Tagman, and Company, PLC, CPA, was the low responsible bidder. They bid a total of $46,750 for five years of conducting the base audit, $8,250 for five years of conducting the DDA audit, and $2,500 per year to conduct a single audit it needed. The city attorney has prepared and approved a contract for these services. Is there a motion to approve the five-year agreement?
I'll make that motion.
Support.
I have a motion by Councilmember Cody, support by Mayor Proton Zaring, to enter to the five-year agreement. Is there any discussion?
I have a question about, was it more financially advantageous to do a five-year agreement versus year-to-year or?
Typically, most audit engagements are in that five-year range. I prefer to see them in seven. The reason is, you have to, when you bring in a new audit firm, it's very expensive to change. You have to bring them up to speed. It takes a lot more time the first couple of years with fieldwork and getting them used to your procedures. There was some feeling back when they had the Enron debacle that they wanted to see auditors change. I believe it's all yours. That was kind of in the private sector. The pendulum's kind of swung back the other way. So we had a five-year agreement with Gabbridge and we decided to do a five-year. I think three is too short and I'm not sure council would have been comfortable with a longer engagement, so I think five is probably the right number.
Thank you.
Can you please take the roll?
Mayor Proton Zaring.
Yes.
Councilmember Cody.
Yes.
Mayor Kenny.
Yes.
Councilmember Gustad.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlow.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to notices, communication, and announcements. As a part of each council meeting, there's a report from a cooperating agency, organization, or department. Tonight, we'll hear from the Housing Commission and the County Prosecutor. Right now, Mr. Clinton McKimmon Corfus will report on the activities of the Manistee Housing Commission.
Good evening. Did the handouts get?
Yes, it did.
Briefly update you with some of the information from the handout. I really like statistics. I'm just going to kind of give you a roundup of what happened in 2013. HUD requires that we maintain an occupancy rate of all our properties of 97 percent. We closed the year out across all our properties at 98 percent. We have 214 units that are rentable, leaseable to residents, and we had 211 by the end of the year. Our biggest turnover property is Century Terrace. That's our largest property, and because of that size and location and the type of building it is with the small one-bedroom units, it frequent turnover. And our next frequent turnovers is our family sites, our scatter sites up behind the old Kmart and the Vine Street area. That's our largest area, the Madison 12th Street and a few other places throughout the city. HUD also sets standards of how many days my maintenance crew can turn a unit around, how many days our leasing crew can have to lease up a unit, and how many days total from when tenant A leaves and tenant B moves in. Like, we have 20 days when tenant A leaves and tenant B moves in, and we close the year out at 10.33 days. And our average maintenance days was 7.77, and lease-up days were 2.37. In 2012, mid, early 2012, we had a 99-day average of unit turnovers. So I want to commend our staff for working very hard to meet the standard and maintaining it now, basically for two years in a row. They're doing very well with us. Our reserves, HUD, through the recovery agreement, and I'll report about the recovery agreement a little bit, had set three different standards over a three-year period to get us to our reserve level. So at the end of 2015 fiscal year, we'd have $450,000. At the end of 2013, we had $350,000, which represents 3.89 months. The requirement for HUD was to have five months of that time. I'll report a little later, that requirement's been removed and now we're at the general guideline of moving, like all public housing authorities, to six months in reserve. And we're all on track on meeting that. There's no target date for the six-month reserve, other than the fact that that's where our commissioners are moving and we're pushing and we're headed straight forward. General brief profile about our tenants. Our average household size is a one-person household. Average age of that person in the household is 54. The average annual income is $13,311. Average rent is $235. And the average length of tenancy is 4.29 years. That would vary if I went across property or shore stays like Century Terrace that said earlier, but Harborview and our scatter sites, you'd have longer tenancy rates. Also wanted to take an opportunity to address some of our collaborations and how they interfaces with the city strategic plan. Two areas I want to focus on is general community. I participate in the Manistee County Continual Care as a public housing authority, and we're partners also with Central Wellness, and so we participate in the Central Wellness Community Partners Group that meets quarterly. And I recently joined participating in the Manistee County Housing Stakeholders Group, which is a new group that began formation in January of this year to begin looking at countywide housing needs across all income sectors. Participation by your housing commission helps you reach the goal of 6.1 in strategy 6.1.1, and the participation in the stakeholders group focuses on 6.1.2, on strategic plan. So on your behalf, I'm representing the interest of housing through the city in these groups.
Thank you.
Also have, we have lots of partnerships, but two I really wanted to focus on tonight. One is with the city itself, particularly the city of Manistee Police Department. We have a great partnership that's focusing on increasing the safety of all of our residents across all of our properties and reducing criminal activity. G. Bachman was able to work through the council, and we were able to receive a revenue share of grant that enabled us to put cameras, security cameras at Century Terrace, and that's been a great boon for us. And with that, we were able to leverage just enough funds to update at the same time the current camera system we had at Harborview. So Century Terrace and Harborview are well-covered in cameras, and the police department, I'm not sure exactly how many officers, but many of them are able to access it right off their iPhone and see what's going on live. And then from the computer program that I have, and we hope to install a few of the officers' computers, they're able then to record and save and use as evidence as they do. We've also, in 2013, had quarterly meetings where some of the county officers and some folks in the fire department and I would get together to whoever turned up to our community meeting once a quarter, just to address the needs at Century Terrace. What are some of the activities we see going on there? What are some things that interface for the residents to help them? What are they living with that the police department may not know about, or the fire department may not know about? Or what are some things that could be communicated from either agency to residents to help increase their safety and enjoyment of their homes? And those were quite successful. We haven't established them yet for 2014, but I believe we probably will in the near future. But the residents seem to enjoy that opportunity to speak directly to some of the officers in the police department. We also have, as I mentioned, a very strong relationship with Central Wellness, and we've been focusing on growing that and strengthening that over the years. Several residents are participants with Central Wellness, and recently, a few years ago, we joined within a partnership to help provide some residents with additional community support if they need to have to live independently. And through that, we've just recently developed, assigned a memorandum of understanding that's been increasing interfacing of our staff and their staff in working with these residents with the federal regulations that we have of keeping folks leased up in public housing and the regulations they have federally to deal with residents and individuals who are participants of their programs. We've done a very strong program, very helpful at least, to the people that we're serving, which are, with Housing Commission, our residents, but for the Central Wellness, they're consumers. And I see there's a growing synergy program. These two areas, these two partnerships, help the city strategic plan 6.1 of 6.1.2. So again, we're trying to work on behalf of the city to help meet some goals that were set by council. The last thing I want to report, this is a rather short piece of a two-page letter that the manager Dyche and Mayor Kenny have received from Mr. Garrett. Mr. Willie Garrett is the director of the Detroit Field Office type. And beginning of this letter, and I'm just going to read it to us, "Subject: HUD's notification of closure of the 2011 Recovery Agreement Action Plan and Continued Monitoring. The purpose of this letter is to validate the city managing Housing Commission, recovery and achieved sustainable performance in accomplishing the agreed-upon levels of performance described in the recovery agreement and action plan of 2011. The HUD team assigned responsibility of providing technical assistance and coaching to the city managing Housing Commission in developing place-based solutions, steps, and resources to support the agency's recovery. Has determined based on analysis and assessment of CMHC that the specified remedies identified in the action plan has been accomplished and the target levels of performance to improve the commission's long-term sustainability has been accomplished. However, it is an extension of the team to continue monitoring the CMHC in order to ensure sustainable performance." In short, we've moved out of the trouble status. And now we're in general monitoring that Detroit Field Office provides to all the housing authorities throughout the state of Michigan. And I really want to take a moment in this area to give thanks to those who helped us reach this landmark of getting that trouble status taken care of, particularly our staff. I have listed Lauren Persky, Beverly Bahaskey, Monica Otis, Kevin Hemeniak, Robert Kropchak, and Anthony Masstrappasquad. Those are our current staff members. We have several staff members from the main store who have retired during this timeframe, and their work and efforts in that area are also appreciated. To the commissioners, who put in a lot of volunteer time, extra meetings, extra reading materials, reviewing, strategizing, and looking at things. President Priester, who for a long period of time had Friday afternoon meetings on the phone with Mr. Garrett and other times throughout the week with his staff to move us through this process. I also want to thank Mitch for his support and guidance and his direct participation in the process. It's been very, very helpful. And also to George Taylor for his research, interpretation of, and the guidance through HUD regulations, federal, state laws that we have to deal with, and for his forbearing of me calling, same with Mitch, and venting every now and then the passivity issues that we have. So we're in a good position, and we feel very good about where we're headed. We're moving on some major projects that need to be addressed at the Housing Commission, cattle projects, some roofing issues at Century Terrace, elevator issues at Harborview. So hopefully we'll see some work happening in the next month or two here once bids are all processed. If you have any questions, you're welcome to answer. You may have.
I just want to commend all the work. Yeah, I was at that meeting when they first put you on notice and the work that you and the commissioners have done to really turn things around and meet their requirements. I know it was a huge effort and very proud of everyone involved to help do that.
I do have a question or two for you. Thank you for that, letting me learn a little bit more about you. When Century Terrace was first brought into being after the old Century Plant was torn down, it was for the elderly retirees, and I see that that has turned around now. There's probably not a lot of elderly retirees and it's more, more young. Can you walk me through that process, why?
When Century Terrace was built, it was built with the approval of HUD under a five-year plan to be designated elderly and disabled, near elderly. So that meant 55 and older than near elderly. Elderly is considered 62 and disabled, anybody that's considered disabled. With federal regulations, five years expires, and there's paperwork that needs to be done. Well, the building was built in 69. It expired in five years. There's no paper trail ever of previous administrations renewing that designation. And since that time, it's been viewed by the US Department of Housing and Urban Development as general population, which means if you're 18, you have an income, you can move in if you may be eligible to be required. It's been that way. Previous administrations did not follow regulations as was required. And in that case, when I first arrived, we had probably about, turn the number up top, we had about 10, 15 units that had been long-term, like in three, four years vacant because they couldn't be filled, as you tried to fill them with elderly folks. They're a little there. Detroit Field Office at that time, when I came in, said, "If you have vacancies, if you can fill them, here's a requirement, your general population, you have another paperwork." We tried to do the paperwork to designate some of the buildings that we have, and the paperwork came back from Fair Housing saying, "You need to project solid statistics for 15 years in the future that you will not be denying your family access to public housing because you designate this building elderly and disabled." Kind of hard to project about 15 years that you're not going to harm the family like that. And so Fair Housing would not approve that, which is a part of HUD. They would not approve that to go on. So every now and then I try to resubmit my application for designation, but it usually doesn't make it very far. Maybe it makes it out of the Field Office, it goes to HQ, but then it doesn't go. So it's a HUD regulation that had not been renewed five years after the building at Century Terrace.
In '74. I mean, are the HUD, the HUD folks that come in, are they locals? Are they moving here just because we have this extra space? The tenants, the tenants, sorry.
The vast majority of our, we fill our vacancies under the criteria, first, residents of the city of Manistee. Second, residents of the county of Manistee. Third, by eligible criteria. So if you're a resident of the city of Manistee, you have preference points that are given to you, and so that puts you above. Next set of preference points, the highest set of preference points is for veterans. So veteran goes above anybody. And then city Manistee resident, and then employed. So our city Manistee residents go right here. Without looking at our statistics to see where they all came from in front of me, my guess is at least 50% if not more are original folks from Manistee.
Manistee proper?
Yes.
Okay. And then the camera issue, you're installing more cameras or you have cameras in the elevators I take?
No, we have cameras that are outside the elevator. They're geared to face the elevator. They're at all the exit doors, and they do the back of Century Terrace completely and the patio of Century Terrace, and the front walk going out to the street and going out.
Do you know how many cameras are installed in Century Terrace?
38 or 39, something like that. I think it's 39.
39, okay. Do you have any plans for more? I mean, I know dollars rule, but for security for the residents?
I think that's on the horizon. Dave and I have talked about that. It's not a funding priority for HUD, and so we have to look for other sources to find out.
Then my last one, and I promise to say it. And this is my view, taking a walk on the River Rock or at the boathouse having dinner, adult beverage or whatever. You know, looking over at Century Terrace, you know, there's windows open and curtains hanging out and things hanging out of the windows, like shirts and things like that. So to me, it doesn't project a good presence for the city. Is there something that can be done to stop that?
The issue becomes separating our personal views and what HUD considers lifestyle views, okay? And to make determination how someone lives and their lifestyle within their unit can become discriminatory. And to, we're not allowed, committed to set rules and saying, "You will have this kind of curtain, you will do this with the curtains, you will do that with, you won't hang this in the window," and those kind of things. Those become lifestyle issues that we're not allowed to govern. If they're, jump off the window, it's a different.
Well, I mean, towels or T-shirts or pants, you know, hanging out the window, you know.
I have no control over that. HUD doesn't grant this authority over that. I'm not saying I agree with it. I'm saying there's a limit of what we're able to do, and that becomes a lifestyle issue.
Well, could you just have like a rule, nothing outside windows, period? I mean, it's just, it's not, I wouldn't think discriminatory, just a...
We have a rule that windows are supposed to be shut in the wintertime when the heat is on. And we're in a hard time enforcing that rule. That rule would not be...
By as far as saying you can't hang anything outside your windows would not be an appropriate rule.
I personally haven't seen anything hanging out of the windows. I've seen a lot of interesting things hanging inside the windows, but if there were things actually hanging out, we'd let that to your tenant now. But I can't set rules. And we can though, you know, if you see sometime, something like that, you know, feel free to shoot an email or comment and tell me, "Third floor, number this many in from the left, this many from the right," and we can figure that out. I don't want things hanging out the window, but if they want to put up, you know, a purple blanket or a grate, I can't do anything about that.
Yeah, just, you know, across from the Marina, you have somebody with a half a million-dollar yacht or a million-dollar yacht, and they're, you know, they're looking, they parked stern in, and they're looking at that. It's not kosher to me, so.
I understand. There's, this is what we're allowed to set.
More a strong suggestion, a little note on the board.
I understand. I just wanted you to know where our limits are.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions, your colleagues? Thank you.
Thanks, please.
Next, we'll hear from Mr. Ford Stone, who will report on activities in the Manistee County Prosecutor's Office.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have a chart that just gives you a general idea of activity the prosecutor's has been so the last several years here, and I thought that might be illustrated just to let you know what our countywide level of activity was. The city's cases, for me, made up about 30% of my total caseload last year. The remarkable thing, I think, here is with particular reference to the activities of the Scent Narcotics Team. We have a city police officer who's detailed to the Scent Narcotics Team currently and also a deputy from the Manistee County Sheriff's Department. And when I got the annual report on Scent Activity countywide, it turned out that we had worked on nine methamphetamine labs in Manistee County. That turned out to be over the number combined that Mason County worked on and Oceana County worked on. And when I look at prescription drug cases here, we had 32 cases. That again is more than double the caseload in Mason County and Oceana County combined. So that concerned me. So I went to the officers who were working in the field and asked them why it was that we had such a high activity level of those very serious kinds of drug cases. And they tell me that the... in the field and asked them why it was that we had such a high activity level of those very serious kinds of drug cases. And they tell me that the, the detail of sent narcotics is as difficult or as easy as you want it to be. So, I came away with the impression that they were working very hard in developing their cases, and I think they're very highly motivated. I don't think we have a disproportionate number of prescription drug cases or methamphetamine labs here in Manistee County. I think it's the, the activity and the work that the officers are generating that show the numbers, rather than the overall crime level itself. But the methamphetamine cases are extremely labor-intensive, and they're labor-intensive because every sentence in Michigan is ruled by the Michigan sentencing guidelines. When it comes to methamphetamine guidelines, the legislature took that very, very seriously. So, if you are convicted of a methamphetamine-related offense in Michigan, you are almost guaranteed a prison sentence. And for some reason, people don't like to go to prison. So, they fight tooth and nail on these methamphetamine cases. We have lots of contested motions, and lots of trials, because the outcome is almost certainly going to be a prison sentence. So, that has been a very active part of, of the caseload. But I can't stress enough that the activity level of the officers is what's generating those cases. There, those cases are out there to be found, I think, in every county. But our officers are more active than, than others. Of course, it's my hope that if we do those first nine methamphetamine lab cases, and all nine go to prison, the next nine people won't spend their afternoon on the internet trying to find the recipe and duplicating it. That is the unfortunate part of methamphetamine, though. I think I could probably take a person of average intelligence with a good broadband internet connection, and some ninth-grade math skills, and at the end of the afternoon, I could probably teach you to make methamphetamine. It's, it's not all that difficult. Of course, the risks are great. You can burn yourself or blow yourself up. But there are always people willing to try that. So, we have an educational component that we need to get out there, and of course, an enforcement component, where, as I said, we try to send the, the first few to prison, and let that be a lesson to the rest, and hopefully deter that kind of activity. You'll notice a couple of other things. The green lines on the left of the chart that I've given you are felony caseload, and you can see that rising. Those are the more serious cases we deal with, and obviously, more labor-intensive, longer trials, lots more trial prep, discovery, and, and motions, and things like that. You're also going to see the blue bar, which is our misdemeanor caseload. Last year, when I talked to you, we talked about how the caseload had flipped between the Sheriff's Department and the state police. It used to be that every year, I would get about forty percent of my caseload generated by the state police. The Sheriff's Department now does about forty percent of the caseload, and the city police carry about thirty percent of the caseload. And the rest comes in from other agencies, DNR, Office of the Inspector General on Welfare Pro, booth stamp cases, and things like that. And so, that generates a fairly small portion. What we see here, and I think you can see it very graphically, is in 2011, when the state police reallocated their resources, they centralized locations. Our nearest state police post is Cadillac. That's considered our local post now. We have attachment that works out of the Oaks Correctional Facility, but no per se state police post. When that happened, you can see that we lost a chunk of misdemeanors off the top of that blue bar. So, that tells me that there are probably people out there evading detection on traffic matters and things like that, that in years past, we would have gotten prior to reallocation. But those are stabilizing around eight hundred and fifty, instead of about a thousand now. I think if the state police presence had been maintained in Manistee County, you probably would have seen that blue bar up around a thousand very consistently, instead of eight fifty, where it is. So, a little disconcerting to me how little police presence there is in the county. However, in Manistee City, we always have good coverage, because we usually have two cars on the road. So, there's been no loss of police assets here in the city. But I think if you look at those graphics, you'll see what happened in the rest of the county, when we have fewer cars on the road, and fewer police. The juvenile petitions have dropped, too. That's the red bar. And I think that's due in part to a couple of things. First, the law changed. Prior to 2012, in Michigan, juveniles presumed competent to stand trial, and presumed to have the ability to develop criminal intent at age seven. So, anybody over age seven, or at age seven sometimes, was considered able to form criminal intent. The legislature has now adopted a standard where anyone under ten is not presumed to be able to form criminal intent. And there's a procedure in place which is both time-consuming and expensive, to take a person ten or under through a competency evaluation, and determine whether they did in fact have criminal intent. But I think between that change in the law, and some of the diversion programs, like the, of course, consent calendar, you're seeing the juvenile petitions drop accordingly. Consent calendar is a provision in the juvenile code where a young person is placed without an adjudication or a conviction on a series of probationary terms. And if they complete that successfully, the matter is just dismissed, dismissed without further action, and without the entry with criminal record. That is thought to be a beneficial program. It keeps young people from being stigmatized with juvenile adjudication at a young age, and seems to be keeping them in school, and keeping them from reoffending. Sometimes, they do come back. You normally get the opportunity at consent calendar one time. So, you have to, you get your one bite of the apple and use it to, to your benefit if you're, if you're given the status of consent calendar. I think the public safety departments here in the county have worked very well seamlessly. We know that the Little Riverlands, the Department of Public Safety officers have been cross-deputized and worked here in the city for several years. That has proved to be very beneficial to both agencies, and has been able to provide extra people on the street, and a good cooperating and working relationship, in particular since the sheriff has also cross-deputized the Little Riverland Public Safety officers. And they have been a very valuable asset in responding to complaints, directing traffic at accident scenes, and all sorts of other things that we just didn't have the people to, to provide coverage for. Are there any questions from council?
I have a question on the felony cases. As we see those increasing, are you seeing probably an increase in the type of felony, or the felonies that are happening, are they getting, what'd you say, worse? The, the type of crime that's going on?
We're seeing a, a class of offenders that is getting younger, and, and more amoral. And they, they don't seem to have the regard for property, or people that I have seen in years past. We're currently working on a homicide case, and the, the attitudes of people involved are amazing to me. I don't know whether it's a socialization issue, or a parenting issue, or what exactly is going on here. But there is a genuine lack of remorse and consideration for people's feelings, and for the consideration of what their actions are going to bring about. So, that does disturb me a little bit.
The reason I ask is, as we see, you know, you made a reasoning why some of those misdemeanor cases have gone down. As part of council, with this budget season coming up, there's been discussion on the number of police officers who are riding in a vehicle at a time, and looking out for their safety. So, as we see those felony cases increase, tells me that the type of crime that's being committed out there is worsening.
I think that is a, a very logical assumption, based on the data that we have. There's no substitute for having two people in a vehicle, especially during those nighttime hours. That's been a very critical officer safety issue that remains, so.
I appreciate the efforts of your office in prosecuting so many of these. I know these have to take quite a bit of time. I appreciate the effort that your office goes through.
Thank you, appreciate that, too.
Any other questions?
I have none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we'll move on to introduction of the fiscal year 2014-15 budget. Administration has prepared and proposed the 2014-15 fiscal year budget. City Mayor Mitch Deish and Finance Director Ed Bradford will give a brief introduction of budget recommendations to city council and the community.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for allowing us to present the fiscal year budget for fiscal years fourteen and fifteen to city council this evening. As we have done for the past couple of years, we've held off on holding any public hearings of the citizens until this presentation is made, hopefully providing some additional information to the citizens before they may ask some questions. The budget was delivered to you on, a couple of weeks ago, or a week and a half ago. The budget is available at the library, and at city hall, and various other locations. Do we have it on the budget? Do we have it online, or is it? As well as online, that the citizens can all obtain that document and look at that information. We've prepared a presentation tonight for you. This starts our budget discussions for fiscal year fourteen, fifteen. At the end, we'll go over the budget calendar, looking at some potential future dates. And we'll schedule as many meetings as council needs, additional meetings beyond what we have already scheduled on the calendar for you this evening. Thank you.
I just want to go over a few of the highlights of the, of the proposed budget that was delivered to you. For the general fund, obviously, property tax revenues are declining. We're going to have increased health insurance costs. And we also presented the clerk and financial services white paper several months ago. For the water and sewer fund, obviously, we've got a rate study. We'll talk a little bit more about that in a bit. There's going to be continuing need for capital projects, and also for repairs and maintenance on our system. And then, there's a potential bond issue that's going to need to be floated to fund some of those. For the marina, I think the key question is how do we generate additional traffic, and thus additional revenue there. For the ram cell theater, we've got a number of issues. The primary liability is governance. We'll be doing some strategic planning, and then there's also some issues with fundraising and raising the level of community involvement. For the street funds, as we've been talking about for a few months, the, the big issue there is how are we going to generate additional revenue? This budget does not directly address that, but there'll be a parallel process that we'll be looking at that. And we also will talk about the street asset management plan as part of that process. For the refuse fund, we do have a proposed rate increase, which we'll go into. And soon enough, we'll be looking towards the next contract for our waste haul. So, just take a look at the budget highlights. These charts show a couple of different things. The first one is the budget by area, and the lower one, and the lower right is the budget by type of expense. The total for all funds is about seventeen million. That's an increase of three point eight million over last year, but that's primarily because of a three point seven million proposed bond issue. If you look at the budget by area, the general fund, about five point eight million. Water and sewer is about seven point seven million, but that's again because of the bond issue. Typically, it's right around a three point nine to four million range. Those are by far the two biggest city operations, the, the general fund, which provides most of the services the citizens receive, and the water and sewer fund. If you look at by type of expense, nine million, nine point nine million is operating expense, about two point eight million is debt service, and about four point two million is capital outlay. But again, that four point two million includes three point seven million in bond charges. We talked about the clerk and financial services white paper. That was presented previously to council. It was a comprehensive review of those departments. The conclusions of that paper were that the clerk and financial services departments are really kind of like a Swiss Army knife. They do a whole lot of different things that, not only just their core functions, but outside of their core functions. It's kind of a catch-all department. The benchmarking showed that the staffing was somewhat on the low end of peers. But the biggest recommendation that came out of that white paper was creating an administrative services department. However, the budget constraints that we were faced with in this year's budget have delayed implementation of that. This was a, a copy of the proposed structure of the financial services, or of the administrative services department. That was the recommendation over that paper, if you've seen that before. Moving on to the general fund, the proposed budget is about five point eight seven million dollars, which is an increase of about one point eight percent over last year, just slightly above the inflation rate. Key revenue points, our tax base has declined, and our resultant tax revenue has declined for the fifth straight year. We lost another one percent this year. DDA is going to lose about twenty-five thousand dollars, which is a pretty significant chunk of the budget. And that's not really part of the city budget, but I just point that out. It's a combination of both the small parcel exemption for the personal property tax, which the state is phasing out, and the continued decline in commercial real estate downtown. I sent that information to DDA Director Patrick Kay earlier today. Revenue sharing and EVM is a bright spot in the budget. It's expected to increase, although now there's rumblings and lansying that instead of increasing revenue sharing to the communities that traditionally get it, they want to spread it out more amongst the hundreds and hundreds of townships that currently don't receive any revenue sharing, and, and keep that increase that you're expecting lower. So, I'm not sure how that's going to shake out, but that has been floated. Our transport revenue for ALS transport is expected to increase about nine point five percent, or almost twenty thousand dollars. And then, we've got a few other increases, things like service fees and administrative fees. This is a breakdown of the revenue for the general fund. Property taxes is about fifty-four percent. If you recall, that used to be up well over sixty percent, maybe even sixty-five percent. And that's just been that steady decline in our property tax base. It's become a smaller piece of the pie for the general fund revenues. And that's happened in the last five to six years. The other items are pretty stable. Interfund revenue is composed of reimbursements and administrative fees. State of Michigan revenue sharing, again, I said that's the, one of the bright spots in the budget, assuming things hold as they originally were estimating them. Transfers in are almost entirely to service debt. So, those aren't really operating transfers. We just record our general obligation debt in the city's general fund. So, the transfers in are for the funds that need to pay for that debt. And then, we've got a variety of other types of revenue. Property taxes, this is the chart I was showing you before. As you can see, from ninety-six through two thousand and three, we had high single-digit, if not double-digit growth in our tax base year over year. I mean, that was a phenomenal period of growth, and it was largely tied to Harbor Village. But also, just a, a real good economy generally, and a good market. Even after the two thousand recession, the property values still continued to go up. Two thousand was an anomaly, or two thousand and four was an anomaly. That was the General Chemical, property tax appeal, and, and lost a lot of value off the tax rolls. And then, two thousand and five to two thousand and nine was fairly steady, higher than inflation, but not phenomenal growth. And then, you can see for the last five years, we've had that negative growth. So, that's really been, the, the, the growth in the tax base, or lack thereof, is really what's been driving the general fund downsizing over the last several years, and, and making challenges for the budget. Another way to look at it, our taxable value is down about nine point two percent since two thousand and nine, and that equates to about three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars annually. We're projecting about thirty-three thousand dollars, thirty-three thousand dollars lost this fiscal year. State revenue is down thirty-six percent since two thousand, which is a loss of about three hundred and fifty-eight thousand annually. However, we're about thirty thousand more this year. So, again, that's one of the bright spots. And you can see that trend is starting to go back up, primarily due to say increased sales tax collections, as the economy starts to rebound. But this, this persistent loss of revenue over time, you know, how has the city dealt with that? Primarily by lower headcount. But we've also slowed the wage growth for existing employees. We've implemented and continue to implement health insurance cost sharing. We've squeezed out operational efficiencies where possible. And we've been trying to enhance revenues through things like collaborative partnerships, and ALS transport, and things like that. But if those trends continue, it's going to be much more difficult to balance the budget, as we saw this year. Another area, EMS- Another area EMS, advanced life support transport. There's no doubt that this initiative has been a success, and I think we have Dave and the guy at the fire station to give accolades to because they've really worked out well with that. It's providing a much higher level of service for residents, less waiting time, better quality service, higher service. And it's increased our revenue by about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So those are all real positive things. Again, this year more staff with the paramedic training. It's important to point out though that that increased revenue is also an increased cost. We've added personnel, we have more medical supplies, we're paying professional services to do the billing, and we have an increased motor pool contribution for the new ambulance. But overall, it's definitely a net positive to the budget. General fund expenditures, just some key points. The budget includes some modest wage increases for the different groups and continued cost sharing. Both of those are subject to collective bargaining with our union groups. We have a bigger election here this year. It's a midterm election, so every couple of years, the budget for the clerk's department increases because they have to hold another election and they need more workers. So you'll see that. There was an increase in the motor pool contribution from the fire department for the new ambulance that was purchased, and we've also reclassified some expenditures as appropriations that used to be budgeted in the parks department, specifically the community pool and some maintenance that we do on the Reeds Park field for the Manistee Saints. So we can talk about that when we get into the budget process, but we think that lends better transparency. There's been position changes in this year's budget. We merged the public safety director and utility director position into one, so that's a loss of a position. And we've eliminated the community development director position, and that's a loss of a position.
I just would like clarification on that.
Not public safety, I'm sorry. That's a type of public.
I was questioning that slightly too. I bet Dave was sitting back there.
Well, that's news to me. Well, that's supposed to say public works director. The community development director position was slated to be replaced with a lower level clarify position. That's been postponed temporarily. It's not in this year's budget. And again, this year, we have an additional seventy-two thousand contribution from fund balance, which is the same as it was last year. That's sixty thousand for the Ramsdale Theater director and twelve thousand potentially for more paramedic training, assuming we can't get a grant for that. Labor costs, that's the biggest part of our budget, typically around sixty percent. And I just want to point out that the employees really have been an active partner in helping the city manage this last five years, so I think they've been really helpful in accommodating. Right now, health insurance is a big unknown. We were originally projecting a thirty-three percent increase. We just got the rate renewal back. I haven't even looked at it, but the email said that it was seventeen percent. So that changes the equation potentially a lot of things we've been talking about. I'm going to dive into that tomorrow, but the point is those costs keep going up and up and up, and they're being driven by basically two things. One is just general overall health inflation, which is far exceeding normal inflation. One is uncertainty in regulatory requirements being introduced by the Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act. And the other thing is just the city's experience, which is actually a much smaller piece. But those health costs are becoming unsustainable, both for the city and for the employees. And so we're working with an employee insurance review group to try to come up with a plan that's affordable for everybody and still gives good coverage. One thing is the state mandated hard cap. The state says that public employers can only pay a certain amount for a single, two-person, and family plan, and so we're working under that cap. Union contracts, we have three of them that have reopeners for wage and health insurance, and we have one with seal workers which are actually open for negotiation. Any changes to this will be subject to those collective bargaining negotiations, but we certainly do have to build assumptions into the budget, so. Operational expense, just briefly, those budgets really have been trimmed where possible. There's really no fat left in them. There's still inflationary pressures, particularly on fuel, like gas and diesel at times and some other things. And then the department heads are still continually looking for efficiencies. As an example, by putting the audit out to bid that you just approved, we saved a significant amount of money compared to the other auditor, even though they were the second mover, the one we had currently. So we try to look for things like that periodically and just continue to squeeze out efficiencies where possible. Employment, this is a pretty telling trend, and it pretty much mimics the decline in tax value that we've had. You can see it's down to fifty-five, which is almost the low point, and it's down ten from our high point back in two thousand and four, two thousand and five. That's not a lot of employees when you consider the scope of services that the city provides because we definitely are a full-service community. As I mentioned earlier, we're down two full-time positions, and I get I said public safety directors, public works director, community development and emerging of a position. And we're down those ten employees, we're fifteen point five percent since two thousand and four. It's a significant reduction. Just briefly on pensions, because pensions have been in the news a lot lately, we have a well-funded pension system. This is the first year we've slipped below a hundred since I've been with the city. That's primarily a result of the poor market performance starting in two thousand and eight, although that's rebounded. It takes time for those calculations to go into the actuarial valuations. They typically lag our budget here by eighteen months, which gives time for you to budget for that. But we're still well ahead of the average MERS member, and we're certainly well ahead of many of our peers in the general area, like Luddington and Cadillac and some of those plans. And it's really because we've got reasonable benefits and required employee contributions, which a lot of places don't have. So unlike Detroit and Chicago and Illinois and California and some of those places that have huge unfunded liabilities, that's not the position that the city's in. A little bit about general fund users. We've not actively used fund balance to balance the budget. Instead, we've undertaken structural reforms like reduction in headcount and squeezing out those efficiencies. In spite of this very difficult environment, our general fund balance has increased by almost four hundred thousand over the last four years. And as of the six-thirty twenty thirteen audit, we were at nineteen point four percent of expense, which is just slightly below our twenty percent target. However, we are budgeted to tap seventy-two thousand of those reserves for the current fiscal year that we're in and also in the proposed budget. And that again is for paramedic training and three-year commitment to the Ramsdale director. You can see a graph of our general fund budget. This upward trend here, again, parallels those double-digit growth increases you saw in taxable value. So much of the tax value generated revenue, taxable value increase generated revenue went into the city's fund balance. It leveled off here for several years. Again, that was the flat area that you saw in the taxable value chart, and with the drop here was primarily not due to the loss of taxable value, but to transferring excess funds to the city's capital improvement fund. And then we've grown it since then, and then we've kind of leveled off. Last year, I think we had about a fifty thousand dollar reduction in fund balance. But right here, I'm sorry. So that's actually, considering the economic terms, I think, a pretty strong performance. Moving on to the water and sewer facility, if you can kind of get a visual of the plant there, it's a factory, it's a big operation. It's keeping the job busy, that's for sure, especially with all the spring runoff and what have you. It is the second biggest city fund, and this year, we're projecting a little over four million dollars in revenue. Challenges for the water and sewer fund, it's nothing new. We've been dealing with them for quite some time. That's the ongoing state mandates for sewer separation. Even though we've completed an awful lot, there's still more work to do. We've got to close off that last outfall and potentially build a retention basin and identify points where water's still getting into the system through the SSE S study, so there's still more work to do. We have aging infrastructure, so anything that hasn't been replaced as part of the separation, a lot of it's awfully old. You've noticed that on the main break that we had there in Washington Street. It's an old galvanized pipe, and it's aging.
Cast.
Or cast.
Or cast.
And then we need to ensure we have adequate revenue to support the system. But there's also some opportunities with the water and sewer fund. We've got this professional rate study, which we're going to talk about a little bit, and then the current discussion with our neighboring townships have some opportunities. Briefly on rates and revenue, we are required by law to levy rates and or generate revenue sufficient to service our debt, to operate our system, and to maintain our system. We don't have a choice in that. We have to do that. We have a choice as to how aggressively we want to do that, but we need to be able to operate so we can maintain compliance with laws and regulations and our discharge permits. We've always conducted an internal rate review as part of our annual budget process, but this year, we also commissioned a comprehensive rate study by Burman Associates, which is a nationally known rate consultant firm. They've done over a thousand rate studies, and that was part of our ongoing discussions with Manistee Township. So the budget that you had delivered to you was prepared using the internal ratemaking process because the external ratemaking process or the rate study wasn't complete yet. But they are wrapping that process up, and so it's kind of gone very well. April ninth is our stakeholder meeting, and April fifteenth, that'll be presented to council. So that's just around the corner. April fifteenth is going to be a long meeting. You might want to stock up on some caffeine before that. There's going to be a lot going on in that agenda. This rate study was prepared using American Water Works Association standard, which is the gold standard. That's the bible. And if council chooses to adopt the rate study, those numbers will be superimposed in the budget and revised across that. But I will say, the internal ratemaking process and the external results are very close. So there's some differences in structure that we'll see when that's presented, but the overall impact is very similar. And with that said, the budget assumes a nine percent rate increase this year, which will increase in average by about six dollars per month. Future rate increases again will depend on customer price sensitivity, which has been fairly significant the last several years, but is starting to level off. Customer volumes, the timing of additional customers, and what level of capital investment is needed. And speaking of capital investment, some of the big ones that still need to be done are the CSO closure and possibly the retention basin, the Riverbank sewer line, which is just north of here, Sixth Avenue lift station, top coat and or paint the Maywood tank, and then some lift station rehab. And then there's many, many smaller projects. Right now, the budget assumes a three point seven million bond issue, and the budget assumes that happens in this next fiscal year and all the expenses happen in the next fiscal year. The reality is that bond will probably be let if it gets approved towards the end of that fiscal year, and we have up to three years to spend that money. But for purposes of the budget, I needed to show them both in the same year to make the numbers make sense to everybody. Again, assuming that gets approved, and there's a lot of discussions still to be had on that. Moving on to some of our other enterprise funds, talk a little bit about the Marina. There's been a lot of discussion about the Marina and the cost of the new building there. The operations in the budget that was presented to you are very similar to what we had last year. We have two outstanding loans at the Marina. One is from a bank loan of about three hundred and seventeen thousand with a thirty-two thousand annual payment, and one is from the oil and gas fund, an internal loan of about two hundred and seventy-five thousand with a thirty thousand annual payment. The ability to run the operations there at the Marina and pay back those loans is directly dictated by revenues. The cost structure is remarkably similar from year to year there. Wages and stuff really don't go up, operational expenses really don't go up very much. It's all really driven by revenue, which is driven by occupancy at the Marina. We budgeted the last several years for the capital improvement fund to backstop the Marina to the tune of forty thousand. That's what's built into the budget this year, depending again so that we have enough money there to pay for everything that's needed. It doesn't appear that we're getting the traffic in the Marina that maybe hoped for. Occupancy isn't where it really needs to be. So in order to make the ends meet, the budget calls for an interest-only payment on the oil and gas loan, subject to oil and gas board approval, and also that same thing will have to happen for this current fiscal year and just extend that loan for two years. That's not a long-term solution, though. That's a short-term solution, and a long-term solution is that we need more boater traffic. Unfortunately, a lot of that is dependent upon the weather and the fishing and the price of gas. Those are three big factors. We think word of mouth on the Marina building is going to get out and going to start to generate that, but we've had an extraordinarily cold winter. I'm not sure what that's going to do to the spring traffic, although the harbor commission has undertaken a strategic plan that is going to focus on marketing. But those are definitely issues for the Marina. We need to get more boats in the Marina. A lot of times, a vibrant downtown attracts those boaters. Having a lot of boaters makes for a vibrant downtown. It's kind of a big ball of wax. It gets all rolled up together. We hopefully are on the right track, but those are some issues that we're having and our method to deal with that, at least in the short term. For the Ramsdale Theater, Executive Director Mike Terry was just aboard in September. Just to be clear, because there's been a lot of discussion about this in the newspaper and in some other venues, the operations are partially funded by the general fund. Last year, or this current fiscal year, the contribution was a hundred and seven thousand, and that's been reduced this year to a hundred thousand. The debt service and capital expenditures for the Ramsdale Theater are funded by the capital improvement fund. A hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars is the amount of debt service that that fund has currently. This year's budget did reduce the annual capital allocation that we used to get from the capital improvement fund down to zero, which is the first time that's happened in about five years. The main reason for that is just a recognition that most of the projects that are fairly critical to the Ramsdale are wrapping up or getting closer. There's still probably a half million dollars worth of work over there, but I would say they're more non-core areas, and so just trying to recognize that, we reduced that down to zero this year. And one thing, the budget for the Ramsdale this year is aggressive. It's budgeting a significant revenue increase over twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen. Mike Terry's done a very good job. He's worked out the budget in a lot more detail than we've had in the past. We make no bones about it, it's an aggressive budget, and it requires that we get attendance at our events that we're having, and it requires that our user groups are going to pay more rent, and it requires that we get a governance structure that's going to support fundraising. Those are all things we don't have right now that we need to work through. So it is a very aggressive budget. It is, but we all need to understand the assumptions and how to get there because the idea was we need to try to make this thing more self-sufficient. We've made a lot of progress this last year. The Ramsdale adopted a mission statement, a vision statement, and our values, which is very critical to kind of like the foundation of how you build an organization up. We've started to reengage our past donors through our first newsletter. We're going to be putting that out quarterly. A lot of those got returned, which means our database isn't as good as we'd like it, but it's still a good start. We've made some improvements to our website with better content, and soon we need to redesign it so it's got a better look and feel. Right now, we're piggybacking on the city's website. We're having much more dialogue with user groups, having Mr. Terry over there daily, being able to dialogue with the civic players in the Art Institute. He's increased bookings and has scheduled lots of bookings out into the future. And this is kind of a different type of activity for a city. Normally, a city doesn't put money at risk, but when you're booking, when you're booking events, you put money at risk because every performer requires some type of a guarantee. And you've got to sell tickets in order to offset those costs. So it's kind of untried territory, but we've booked quite a bit of things, even out, you know, as far as eighteen months, just because you've got to get them on the calendar. So I think you've seen that. I think if you follow the Ramsdale either at the website or on Facebook, you'll see that there's more bookings and more things going on, and we just need to get more people there. We have much better day-to-day oversight of the Ramsdale, of the staff that's working there, and of just what's going on. Mike is working an incredible amount of hours. And we are starting a strategic planning process, which, I was supposed to say process, but we're making progress on it too. I think all council got an email from Mr. Terry wanting to set up some meetings to talk about that, so expect to hear more from him on that. In fact, he has a meeting tomorrow in Traverse City with the potential facilitator for that, or on Friday. The long-term sustainability of the theater is the goal, but it's going to take a lot of work to get there. The strategic planning process is going to focus on the governance structure, which currently is an outgrowth of a process that happened about six years ago. And in my opinion, and the executive directors' opinion, it's no longer a functional governance structure, and that needs to change, and that needs to be one of the outcomes that happen from this process. We need to talk about what we need to do to do some fundraising, and then also our long-term structure and how our partnerships with our key user groups are going to evolve. The one thing that's clear, though, is that the Ramsdale will not succeed without greater community support. And when I mean community support, I don't mean the tax dollar subsidies that have been in the newspaper. I'm talking about attendance at our events, about donations, and about volunteers. That's the only way that the Ramsdale is going to make it. We have a very limited market. Our market is probably twenty-seven to thirty thousand people right here in Manistee County and just the surrounding areas. We're not going to pull people from Grand Rapids or Cadillac or Traverse City. Very rarely will that happen. So it is a limited market, and we've got to capitalize on that, and we've got to continue to develop support. Street funds. I think it's safe to say our street funds are financially challenged. That's nothing new. We've been talking about that for several years. Both the major and local streets have debt service requirements. The River Street, Streetscape fortunately is going to go off in the next fiscal year, so not this one that we're budgeting for, but the year after that. So that's going to free up some revenue. And we talked about that as part of the street presentation a few months ago, and we'll continue to talk about that as that process moves forward. The Cedar Street, Orphan Streets, which were the local streets that were reconstructed as part of the Cedar Street sewer separation, has a debt service requirement up till twenty thirty-one. And keep in mind, those local streets are being funded by a transfer from the major street fund to the local street fund, and we're to pay for that to the tune of about eighty thousand dollars a year. I think there's some misunderstandings about that, but that was all for local I think there's some misunderstandings about that, but that was all for local streets. There is one project that's been budgeted. That's the 12th Street reconstruction by the high school from Maple to Oak. There's some crack ceiling budgeted. There's some sidewalk replacement budgeted, including hopefully using a pilot project for some of the saw cutting that I think you saw out here right in front of City Hall. And then also some potential design work for future projects. We updated the asset management plan. It was ready for its five-year update, and presented that to council in December. At a later meeting, council directed staff to put together a plan for raising revenue and addressing our streets. And we're actively working on that plan and process. In fact, we had a couple-hour meeting this afternoon with Mitch and myself and Jeff and the city engineer. So we're working on that, getting that process started. However, the budget doesn't assume that there's going to be a big slug of revenue or we're going to do a bunch of projects. It assumes a status quo funding. And similarly, will be incorporated into our revised budget if we get some additional revenue or we come up with a plan. But right now, it's kind of the status quo funding. Refugees. We have a contract with Allied Waste, Republic Waste, that has a 4% annual escalator. Keep in mind that the funding mechanism for our Refugees Fund is a combination of user fee and millage. And as you've seen, our tax base has declined by about 10% over the last five years, so the revenue that's being generated by the millage is declining. And when you couple that with the fact that we lowered the millage rate in an attempt to draw down this very high fund balance that we had back in 2007, you can see what that's done to our ending fund balance. And the issue becomes, we can no longer do that. We can't draw that down anymore. That was part of the plan, but we're to the point where that can't continue. And so something has to give. And since nobody wants to raise taxes, what we've suggested on the budget is to raise rates somewhat. It's important to note that we've not adjusted rates in the last two fiscal years, even though I think we should have to match that 4% escalator. We kept it flat because of the water and sewer rate increases, trying to kind of buffer the citizenry from those rate increases. But this year, in order to make the budget work, if you don't raise any taxes, which nobody wants to do, the residential and commercial rates would have to go up 12%, which sounds like a lot, but if you actually look here, it means, for a typical residential, it means going from $3.12 to $3.50 or $0.38 per month, $5 a year. For three to six bags, it'd be $9 a year, and for a tidytote, it's $13 a year. Contrast that, just by way of example, with the Charter Communications thing that happened recently, where they switched everybody over to digital. And if you've got more than one box, you're having to pay $8 additional per month to have your TV. So even though 12% is in a percentage terms of a lot, if you look at the annual increases here, particularly for residential customers, it's really not very, very much. And that, by increasing that rate, it assumes we're going to have an ending fund balance of 8,000, which is about probably 12,000 less than a fund of this type should have. We should probably have a lot of $20,000 fund balance in the Refugees Fund. The good thing is, though, the contract is going to be up for bid next year, and a new contract will be let, and we may be able to revisit the rate structure or the cost structures that are embedded in the Refugees Fund, including trash off brags. Capital Improvement Fund, we get about $345,000 in annual revenue. We've got $290,000 roughly of annual committed funds. 85% is obligated of that $345 is obligated until 2017, 2018. 75% obligated 2018, 2019, and 65% obligated from 2027 to 2028. So with the remainder, you have $50,000 to $60,000 there to basically fund current-year projects. And this year, there's several projects that are proposed. There's a grant map for the ice skating rink. There's some improvements, the Fifth Avenue Beach NIA area perhaps, Rotary Park Playground, which is a carryover from past year's, fire station improvements, and some. Just a couple of comments on the capital improvement fund. We've undertaken a lot of projects in the last several years, and we really don't have the resources, as you can see, from those obligated funds to sustain that pace. So the spending will be more moderated, and grant funding will become even more crucial to the extent that we can do grant matching. But just imagine where the city would be if we didn't have those enhanced oil and gas revenues, which is kind of a lead into this. You can see the oil and gas earnings in this area since 2009 what they've been, and that's since we've been investing it like a pension fund. And we've shown this to council before. You can see what the market value of the oil and gas fund is and what it's been projected to do. But I really want to take this moment to caution council, because this is supposed to say a bull market. We've been in a bull market since 2009. We've got a straight path up in the stock market. In fact, the S&amp;P 500 hit a record high today. Markets will go down. They always do. And that means this fund will go down. But this is a perpetual fund, and the idea is, it's over long-term, it's going to outperform inflation. I'm working with our investment advisor, Woody Ullwatt. I'm going to have this for the next oil and gas board meeting to conduct a sensitivity analysis as to what that means for available spending reserves in some different market scenarios. Hopefully, we'll have that for the next thing. But just want to caution, this roller coaster ride isn't going to go straight up forever. Eventually, you get to the top of that, and you go down after that. But the way it's been set up, it still should provide for some sustainable spending in the future. In summary, it was another challenging budget, or more challenging than maybe we anticipated going into it. But I think, as the manager said in his transmittal letter, we're optimistic about the future. There's a lot of good things happening. We've got revived interest in the downtown, the accessory parts there's increased industrial investment, and the house sales are starting to take up. So I think we're about ready to turn the corner, but I kind of thought that for last year, but hopefully this next year, when we're sitting here, we'll be able to say we've turned the corner. The budget works towards council's strategic plan goals. However, we've got revenue limitations, and so we're doing what we can within the available realm. I think the budget addresses the long-term water and sewer needs, particularly if the rate that's going to be presented to you is adopted and implemented. I think it really is the gold standard in what we need to do to make sure we're operating that utility effectively. We set up a process for addressing the street network. We've been working with council on that, and it'll be supported by the scientific asset management plan. And finally, the budget recognizes the challenges of both the Ramsdale and the Marina, and hopefully, the strategic planning process that both have undertaken and will be undertaking will help to address some of that. Finally, just a quick budget timeline. Tonight, we introduce the budget. Next Tuesday, there's the first budget work session. Tuesday, April 15th is a big day. There's a regular council meeting. We have a public hearing. There's a second budget work session potentially, and then the water and sewer rate study presentation. It's going to be a long, long day on this Tuesday. April 22nd is an optional budget work session. April 29th. It's an optional budget work session. Tuesday, May 6th would be when the budget is scheduled for adoption, but you have until the 15th, which is the charter date for budget adoption. Thank you very much.
Next, we'll move on to concern and comments. Citizen comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comments, which are limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Is there anyone who'd like to come? Next, we'll move on to officials and staff. Safeguard. Manager.
Nothing, Your Honor.
My instructor.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Public Safety Director.
Public Safety, whatever. Nothing, Your Honor.
City Attorney.
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
City Engineer.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Councilmember Cody.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mayor Proton Zarin.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Councilmember Whitlock.
Nothing.
Councilmember McGonstar.
I have a question about the progress on the 12th Street meeting with some of the stakeholders and participants. Has there been any progress there?
We have met, we have met as a group again. We've met with Manistee, not Manistee Township, I've got Manistee Township on my mind, the Father Charter Township officials, MAPS officials, road commission officials, city of Manistee. So we all four met again. A separate meeting is going, is being scheduled as we speak with the three property owners. That would be the three property owners on the corner, which are located with the Father Charter Township. We selected three individuals that had relationships with those individuals to meet with them. I'm not sure if that meeting has been held yet, but I know it's being scheduled in the very near future. They wanted to meet with all the property owners together, not individually. Jeff McCool would be there going over the individual plans and looking at some opportunities, quite frankly. I think that there is some, there would be some loss of property, no doubt, by those prop dealers, but I think there's some also opportunities. Kermit guttering, one of those opportunities, the ability to have utilities stubbed into those property lines, various things of that nature.